Morning, we're going to get started. I understand that state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and the Legal Intelligencer prior to the meeting, and can also be found on P H L council dot com. I now note that the hour has come. Mister Decker, will you please call the roll to take attendance? And members that are in attendance will please indicate that you are present to make sure that your image is displayed.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, I am present.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning.
Councilman Don?
Good morning, council president and colleagues and the public.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues, good morning everyone.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues.
Councilman Green?
Morning, council president, good morning colleagues, good morning members of public, look forward to another session of council.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues.
Councilman Heenan? Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues, good morning council president, good morning colleagues, still seeking justice for Breonna Taylor.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mister President, and in a bipartisan manner, good morning colleagues.
Councilman O?
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues, good morning, council member Jones.
Councilman O'Neil? Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mister President, good morning colleagues.
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez?
Good morning, everyone, and congratulations to the African American most influential colleagues that I serve with, proud of you, congratulations.
Councilman Skwila?
Good morning, council president and colleagues.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues, good morning to the listening public.
Council President Clark?
And good morning, a genuine good morning to all my colleagues. We briefly, we traditionally have an invocation at this time, but because of the pandemic, we are not capable of doing that. But now more than ever, given the most recent tumultuous time that we've had leading up to the election, we now enter phase two, the aftermath of the election. And unfortunately, what we foresee in the very near future, that is currently increasing at a very rapid pace, the COVID-19 pandemic that has taken us to our next phase. We genuinely need prayer, but what I would like to do is to ask everybody to please take a moment of silence. A silent prayer for our city, our leaders, the citizens, and our nation as we move forward through this very, very difficult challenge as it relates to the pandemic. Thank you so much, thank you colleagues, appreciate it. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 29th, 2020, and the chair recognizes Councilman Skwila.
Thank you, Mister President, the Journal of the Meeting of October 9th, 20... What was the date? October 29th, 2020, be approved.
Second.
Thank you, moving to the property second, at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 29th, 2020, stand approved, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes had it, and the journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mister President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to councilwoman. And our next order of business is communications. And Mister Decker, would you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that you may have in your possession?
To the President, the members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to sections four, six oh four, and two, three oh seven of the Home Road Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers two zero zero two five nine, two zero zero four one six, two zero zero four one seven, two zero zero four one eight, two zero zero four two three, two zero zero four eight zero, two zero zero four eight one, two zero zero four nine nine, two zero zero five one six, two zero zero five three seven, two zero zero five three nine, two zero zero five four two, two zero zero five four three, two zero zero four one seven, two zero zero four two two, and two zero zero four two three. And I am pleased to advise you that on November 10th, 2020, I signed bill number two zero zero three nine two, which was passed by council at its session on October 22nd, 2020. And that on November 10th, 2020, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on October 29th, 2020, except bill number two zero zero four one seven, which I am returning without my signature. And I am submitting here with, for the consideration of your honorable body, an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, the Aviation Fund, the Community Development Fund, and the Housing Trust Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the General Fund, the Water Residual Fund, the Aviation Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, the Community Development Fund, and the Housing Trust Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Water Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund and the Water Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance amending bill number two zero zero two eight five, approved June 26th, 2020, entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2021 Through 2026 Inclusive." And an ordinance amending bill number two zero zero two eight six, approved June 26th, 2020, entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal 2021 Capital Budget." And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 238 by relocating the southeasterly House Line and Curb Line of Christopher Columbus Boulevard from Washington Avenue to Christian Street, thereby creating a more uniform right-of-way width and continuous footway area for said Christopher Columbus Boulevard from Washington Avenue to Christian Street. And an ordinance approving the second substantial amendment to the Annual Action Plan, 2019 through 2020, to add eleven million, three hundred and eleven, four hundred and four thousand dollars in Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act funding. And an ordinance authorizing an initial 10-year conversion of the current term with up to two five-year renewal terms for a lease agreement the city has entered into with the first T of Greater Philadelphia for operating, managing, and maintaining the John F. Byrne Golf Course, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mister Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileges resolution, be placed on the final passes calendar or the next session of council, unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I want to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mister Decker, would you please read the title of the legislation that is being offered today by members?
Councilwoman Parker offers two bills. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Zoning and Planning by Creating a New Strawberry Mansion NCO" founded by Lehigh Avenue, 29th Street, Sedgely Avenue, Montgomery Avenue, Conrail Right-of-Way, Oxford Street, and 33rd Street. And on her own behalf, she offers an ordinance amending Section 9, 1130 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Unlawful Credit Screening Practices in Employment" by revising conditions on the use of credit information for adverse employment actions.
For the committee.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one bill and one resolution, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14, 1000 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Historic Preservation" by adding new sections to create a searchable database of mural arts in the city, adding notice requirements, comment period, review, and recommendations by Mural Arts Philadelphia and other related duties prior to the issuance of a building permit for a mural arts building.
For the committee.
And a resolution recognizing November 8th through November 14th, 2020, as National Apprenticeship Week and honoring apprenticeship P H L and the District 1199C Training and Upgrading Fund for its continued commitment to providing job skills, training, and opportunity to all Philadelphians.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gimm offers one bill and one resolution, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code", entitled "Landlord and Tenant" to address matters related to the landlord and tenant relationship during the novel coronavirus of 2019 pandemic, including but not limited to periods of applicability of various provisions, such as the applicable period of the eviction diversion program and the timeframes applicable to qualification for certain provisions.
Was that an ordinance? I'm sorry.
It was, Mister President.
Okay, it referred to committee?
And a resolution authorizing the committees on children and youth and education to conduct joint hearings on protocols and decision-making processes in place to protect the health and safety of young people as the school district of Philadelphia navigates a return to in-person learning during the COVID-19 pandemic and the city's role in bridging the digital divide for children and families in the 2020 through 2021 school year.
Next week's calendar.
That's authorizing a hearing, Mister President.
Oh. Thank you. You know, today's calendar.
Councilman Heenan offers two bills, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing an Initial 10-Year Conversion of the Current Term With Up to Two Five-Year Renewal Terms for a Lease Agreement" the city has entered into with first T of Greater Philadelphia for operating, managing, and maintaining the John F. Byrne Golf Course.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 4200 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Donation Bins to Modify the Locations At Which Donation Bins Shall Be Permitted."
For the committee.
Councilman Jones offers a resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia City Commissioners and the hard-working members of their staff for their around-the-clock work during the 2020 general election and for ensuring that every vote cast in Philadelphia was counted.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones, your mic is off.
Thank you, Mister President.
Welcome, sir.
Philadelphia is known for a great many things. We're the birthplace of the nation. We have a trio of toppings that you can put on any cheese stick. We're also known for water rice soft pretzels and are a tough, blue-collar city that worshiped a fictional character called Rocky and a real-life hero called Octavius Cato. We are a blue-collar city where we will throw snowballs at Santa Claus batteries at J.D. Drew, and we have been noted by the president as Philadelphia a place where bad things can happen. But we're also known for Super Bowl 52 with the Philly special. And on Election Day, November 3rd, our commissioners, our city commissioners, did a encore presentation of that. They stood up while the world watched us. All eyes were on Philadelphia, and they proved that the moment was not too big for them. Keep in mind that during this time, we had a joint hearing with the state, I think it was Representative Boyle in our chamber, and we talked about a plan. And at that time, we realized there was no book they could pull off the shelf that addressed pandemics, social uprisings, as well as what was going on economically to our budget. But these folks, our commissioners, Al Smith, Commissioner Dilly, and Omar Sabir proved to the world that the moment was not too big for them. And that in a bipartisan manner, let's say it again, in a bipartisan manner, that they would do their jobs to a level where Fred Voight, God rest his soul, would have been proud. They did that in face of death threats, people with real rifles pulling up to where they were counting the votes, but they kept their heads on their job and completed their mission and are still counting the votes in Philadelphia. So what I want to say is that when you look at Webster's definition of what a Philadelphian is, their name should be added to it. And I want to say to the country and to the world, you're welcome. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on next week's calendar. Let the record reflect, I believe Councilman Heenan has joined us. Councilman Heenan?
Thank you, Council President. Sorry for being a little late and just didn't have an opportunity to thank you and welcome to all my colleagues, good morning.
Thank you, Councilman, better late than never.
Councilman Johnson offers one bill and one resolution, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Chief Executive Officer of the Philadelphia International Airport, the Director of Commerce, the Commissioner of Public Property, the Streets Commissioner, and the Water Commissioner, or any or all of them, on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a non-exclusive license agreement with the owner of 6,900 Essington Avenue, 6,902 Essington Avenue, and 6,904 Essington Avenue to allow for the continued use of utility corridor and related improvements."
For the committee.
And a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Ronald R. Donatucci Senior, a dedicated public servant and renowned political leader.
That'll be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez offers four bills on behalf of President Clark.
Mister President, excuse me, excuse me, Mister Decker, Mister President, I think Councilman... Thank you, Mister President. Councilmember Johnson wanted to be recognized after the introduction of the Donatucci Resolution.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mad Leader, for the acknowledgement. I know we will be voting on the resolution honoring the life and legacy of Ron Donatucci. And so I just wanted to, one, offer my condolences to his family, his friends. I've worked in the capacity of a councilperson, working very closely with Ron Donatucci, and I just want to acknowledge him for his hard work, his dedication to the city of Philadelphia. Very, very, very fine public servant. His yeses were his yeses, his noes were his noes. And it's very rare in this body of politic that you meet people that are straight up, and you take them at their word. So I just want to publicly acknowledge him. We did lay him to rest yet earlier this week, but I want to make a public acknowledgement of his life and his dedication and look forward to voting on this resolution next week. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez offers four bills on behalf of Council President Clark, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Transfers and Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2021 from the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Aviation Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Community Development Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Housing Trust Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Water Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance amending bill number two zero zero two eight five, approved June 26th, 2020, entitled "An Ordinance to Adopt the Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2021 Through 2026 Inclusive." And an ordinance amending bill number two zero zero two eight six, approved June 26th, 2020, entitled "An Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal 2021 Capital Budget."
Thank you, Mister Decker, those four bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilwoman Sanchez also offers a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1615 North Sixth Street located in the 7th Councilman district in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16, 700 of the Philadelphia Code.
That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers two bills. On behalf of Council President Clark, he offers one bill, entitled "An Ordinance Approving a Second Substantial Amendment to the Annual Action Plan, 2019 through 2020, to add eleven million, three hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and four dollars in Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Act security funding." And on his own behalf, he offers an ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions" by adding a new chapter, 9, 4700, to prohibit employers from requiring prospective employees to undergo testing for the presence of marijuana as a condition of employment.
Those two bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilwoman Brooks offers one resolution, entitled "The Resolution Honoring Kindred Arts and Little Giant Creative on the Occasion of the Monumental Tours Public Art Exhibit in the City of Philadelphia."
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers two resolutions, entitled "The Resolution Authorizing the Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee to Hold Ongoing Hearings Regarding the City of Philadelphia's Coronavirus Recovery Plan, Including but Not Limited to Ongoing Applications For and Received Of All Received Dollars, Spending Plans, and Decision-Making Around the Recovery Process and Its Impact on the City of Philadelphia's FY 2021 Budget and Five-Year Plan."
Today's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold hearings investigating and seeking solutions for problems with the One Philly system in light of ongoing issues and inefficiencies which are compromising the city's basic functions and public trust.
Also on today's calendar.
Councilwoman Garcia offers one resolution proclaiming November 15th through 22nd, 2020, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Philadelphia, and honoring organizations, advocates, and city workers for their support, for their work supporting Philadelphia's most vulnerable.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Thomas?
Mister President, excuse me, Mister Decker, Mister President.
I see it now.
Okay.
I'm on a slight delay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you, Mister President. I'm pleased to be introducing this resolution on behalf of the Office of Homeless Services today. One in five Philadelphians face hunger or food insecurity, and this number has only been exacerbated by COVID-19. Hunger and homelessness awareness week is recognized every November around the country. From November 15th to November 22nd, organizations and advocates both inside and outside of city government are holding events and providing information to educate Philadelphians on the issues of hunger and homelessness. I'm grateful to OHS for their tireless work on behalf of our city's most vulnerable residents. No one should have to worry about whether they'll have food on their plate or a roof over their head. But the reality is that hunger, homelessness are stubborn problems that affect far too many people, both here in Philly and around the country. I encourage everyone to get involved during this week of events. You can learn more about different opportunities at H H week dot org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers one resolution honoring and congratulating the Franklin Town Charter Girls Soccer Team on their successful 2019, 2020 season and overall sixteen oh and one record in the Philadelphia Public League.
Thank you, that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Skwila offers three bills, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades in a Portion of City Plan Number 238 by relocating the southeasterly House Line and Curb Line of Christopher Columbus Boulevard from Washington Avenue to Christian Street, thereby creating a more uniform right-of-way width and continuous footway area for said Christopher Columbus Boulevard." And an ordinance authorizing A R D 1105 Walnut or a subsequent owner to install, own, and maintain various encroachments at 1101 through 07 Walnut Street and 138 through 140 11th Street. And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Zoning and Planning" by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making strategic changes.
Those three bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilwoman Bass offers two resolutions, entitled "The Resolution Authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to Hold Hearings Examining the State of Breast Cancer Incidents and Mortality in Philadelphia, The Impact of the Closure of the Susan G. Komen Philadelphia Chapter, Particularly on Women of Color, and Other Resources and Organizations Available to Help the City Prioritize Breast Cancer Control Initiatives in Philadelphia." That one is holding hearings, Mister President.
For, that will be on today's calendar.
And a resolution calling on the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate to hold hearings on voter suppression and voter intimidation during the 2020 United States presidential election.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mister President, and good morning to everyone. I just really wanted to thank all of my colleagues for recognizing the importance of this resolution and calling on the United States Congress to really do something, do something about voter suppression. This is more than just calling on the need for hearings in the Congress because we've had these hearings before, we've had investigations before, and they haven't gone anywhere. And in recent years, we've seen a continual escalation of or increase in voter suppression efforts. And I think that the 2020 presidential general election really just put it over the top with attempts to suppress votes in any way, shape, or form that was possible, particularly among African-American and Latino voters. The amount of suppression was just out of control. We need to get something done as quickly, as soon as possible. And so I just really wanted to, again, thank my colleagues for calling on Congress to do something, not just have hearings, but to actually implement, develop and implement some legislation that can be passed in a bipartisan fashion that says that voting is a constitutional right. Everyone has a right to cast their vote, every vote should be counted, and that this will never happen again. So thank you, Mister President, and to my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman, that will be on next week's calendar.
Excuse me, Council President?
Chair recognizes, is that Councilman Johnson?
Yes, it is, Council President. I just want to commend my colleague, Councilwoman Cindy Bass, for calling up this resolution. We're at an unprecedented time here in America as it relates to our civil rights around voting. And it's very unfortunate that during this particular time, primarily a lot of the targeted states in which there will be lawsuits filed, contesting this recent election revolves around basically black and brown people voting. And so we know our ancestors died for the right to vote, that's something that we all take very seriously. Now, thank you, Councilwoman, for stepping up to the plate and putting our Congress on notice that this is something that we are paying attention to, the eyes of the world are paying attention to this. And it's something that we should never take for granted for us as a people, as a whole. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, and Councilwoman.
Thank you.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mister President. Thank you very much, Mister Decker. We will now move to our reports from committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Green for report from the Committee on Finance. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Council President. Sorry about that. Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Finance reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read your report.
And to the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, to which is deferred bill number 200387, entitled an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code to add a new section entitled Good Parking Jobs for Philadelphia Review Committee to provide for the creation of an advisory body to consider the quality of jobs and opportunities for workers in the parking industry and the potential to make adjustments to the parking tax, including with respect to the goal of reducing the parking tax to 17% by July 1, 2022, based on a review of working conditions in the parking industry, and to provide reports related thereto. And bill number 200599, entitled an ordinance constituting the 25th supplemental ordinance to restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989, as supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax-exempt or taxable water and waste water revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds, some or all of which may be used for the implementation of a revolving commercial paper program for the system. And bill number 200600, entitled an ordinance constituting the 24th supplemental ordinance to restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989, as supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax-exempt or taxable water and waste water revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill numbers 200387, 200599, and 200600.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended. So as to permit first reading this day as bill number 20037, 200599, and 200600. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Thomas for report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports out eight bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is deferred bill number 200182, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 12, 3000 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Use of an Automated Red Light Enforcement System to Prevent Red Light Violations by authorizing the installation of red light enforcement systems at the intersection of 52nd and Lancaster Avenue. And bill number 200254, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Billner Street from Blye Avenue to New State Roads. And bill number 200537, entitled an ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, bill number 180560, approved July 10, 2018, entitled. An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 250 by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portion of Montour Street from Adams Avenue to Falk Rock Street by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And bill number 200539, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 299 by striking from the city plan Parker Avenue from a point approximately 156 feet southwest of Mathia Street to its terminus southwesterly therefrom. And bill number 200561, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 12, 3000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Red Light Enforcement System to Prevent Red Light Violations by authorizing the installation of red light enforcement systems at the intersection of 31st and Spring Garden Street. And bill number 200562, entitled an ordinance authorizing Matray Roy Doing Businesses, John Bartram Association to own and maintain an existing metal bench on the southeast corner of the intersection of South 54th Street and Lindbergh Boulevard. And bill number 200572, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of East Godfrey Avenue from Tabor Avenue to Whittaker Avenue. And bill number 200591, entitled an ordinance amending Section 9, 212 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Newsstands by expanding the allowable items newsstands can sell and offer. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of the eight bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended. So as to permit first reading this day of the eight bills that were just read into the record by the clerk. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squillo for report from the Committee on Commerce
I move that the rules of council be suspended.
Well, yeah.
I'm sorry.
This is the first part. Report them out.
Okay.
Council, you can just report the three bills out with favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the three bills. Bills number... Three bills out of the committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, to which is deferred bill number 200353, entitled an ordinance amending Section 17, 109 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Local Bidding Preferences to amend reporting requirements to require the establishment of local business usage goals and reporting on reaching such goals as a way to assist community businesses recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. And bill number 200544, entitled an ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter entitled Residential Property Wholesalers to regulate the solicitation of purchases of real property and require certain disclosures by property purchasers to homeowners. And amending Chapter 9, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination to provide protections to homeowners from solicitation and related problems. And bill number 200574, entitled an ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code to address matters related to commercial leases and provide eviction and financial relief to restaurant businesses that operate on leased premises. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Squillo for purposes of suspension of the rules permit first reading. Now, Councilman, you're on mute.
Man, I'm doing really good today.
It's all good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of bills numbers 200353, 200544, and 200574.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 200353, 200544, and 200574. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is deferred bill number 200115, entitled an ordinance amending Section 10, 602 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Smoking to prohibit establishments that are accepted from the indoor smoking prohibition from permitting minors to enter and to require health informational signs. And amending Section 10, 614, entitled Electronic Smoking Devices to prohibit establishments that are accepted from the indoor E6 use prohibition from permitting minors to enter and to require health informational signs. And bill number 200425, entitled an ordinance amending Title VI of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code by creating a new Chapter 6, 1300, entitled Healthy Outdoor Public Spaces to promote a healthy environment that protects the public from the risks of toxic herbicides by prohibiting their use on all city-owned or used public grounds, including but not limited to parks, trails, recreation centers, and playgrounds, establishing reporting requirements and establishing a private right of action. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading on this day of bill numbers 200115 and 200425. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 200115, 200425. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for report from the Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Safety reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Safety, to which is deferred bill number 200412, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 10, 2200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hate Crimes to provide penalties for criminal conduct involving misuse of the 911 emergency response system motivated by hatred towards certain characteristics of other persons. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of bill number 200412.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 200412. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and this will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier for a report from the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless, to which is deferred bill number 200420, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to address matters related to the landlord and tenant relationship during the novel coronavirus of 2019 pandemic, including providing for the temporary waiver of certain fees. And bill number 200421, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to address matters related to the landlord and tenant relationship during the novel coronavirus of 2019 pandemic, including providing for repayment agreements and making certain technical changes. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill numbers 200420 and 200421.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 200420 and 200421. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. And that concludes our reports from committee. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee was suspension of the rules had been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 200606, 200607, 200608, 200609, 200610, 200497, 200498, 200369, and 200419. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now move to our public comment session, but it's been indicated to me that there... No one has signed up for public comment. So I will read it. Yeah, I know. I will read an abbreviated memo as it relates to public comment. I do want to indicate that while we have no public comment, I would still like to read the process for which public comment will be implemented in the City Council of Philadelphia during this remote session. So this public comment must concern matters on second reading and final passes calendar for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 5:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add you to the list. We will then telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. And under ideal circumstances, they will have three minutes to speak. However, from time to time, there will be a significant numbers listed. So we do have the authorization to have a flexibility on the time limit. So thank you very much. Next council session, I anticipate that we will have many individuals signing up, so we will read the full document. Thank you so much. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. And, Mr. Decker, if you can please read the title of Resolution Number 200606.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia native Kristen Walker for her outstanding, poised, and professional performance as moderator of the second and final 2020 presidential debate.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion on the resolution of the former Fifth District resident. Councilman Jones.
I move in a bipartisan manner for the approval of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It is moving second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200607.
A resolution calling on the Philadelphia Police Department, the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services to increase reliance on trained behavioral health providers who are responding to 911 calls in order to properly identify when individuals are experiencing mental or emotional distress.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
For a sec, may I be recognized a second? I just want you to know that my colleague, Councilmember Bass, is keenly on top of this as well. From the Health and Human Service side of this, public safety going together with Health and Human Services is the future, we believe, of police-community interaction. And with that, I call for the adoption of the resolution.
Mr. President, a point of order?
Yes.
I'd like to speak.
Councilman Will.
Yes. When we vote on a resolution, we vote on the resolve clause. But there also are whereas clauses that sometimes are difficult, make it very difficult to vote for the resolve clause. I'll be voting for the resolution. It's clearly something that is good. And I just direct this to the sponsor, my good friend, Councilman Jones. On the fourth whereas clause, while a full investigation of the events surrounding Walter Wallace's death is still underway. That really should have been the end of that whereas clause, in my humble opinion. But particularly when we... Because it is under investigation. But particularly the part of that whereas clause that says the officers did not attempt to employ other non-lethal tactics, such as a taser. That, to me, should...
That to me should not be in this resolution. First of all, it's inaccurate. Because one, we don't know if a taser can be used when somebody's wielding a knife, but that's not the, the most egregious part of this. Such as a taser would only apply here if they had tasers. They were trained in with tasers. They did not. It is inaccurate and I believe it just doesn't belong in the resolution. I'm not asking for a friendly amendment. It's the sponsor's choice. I'm, I'm voting for the resolution because the where, the resolve clause calls on the police department. And Department of Human Services to get together and try to improve this with the nine one one system. Um, and there's clearly questions all over the place about uh, that day and, and that um. Lack of uh, coordination where there was supposed to be somebody in the nine one one uh, room and they, from behavioral health and they weren't. But um, it's, it's actually inaccurate and wrong to say that they had a choice of using a taser. Whether it could have been effective or not is not the issue. They didn't have them. They weren't trained in them. Only a third of our. Approximately a third of our officers have tasers. Uh, even though they were advised to have the whole department start getting them in two thousand seventeen. Uh, if any council member was aware that they didn't have enough money and were asking for it, uh, I'd like them to put up their hand because I don't think any council members. Who were here in the last term were, would have any knowledge of that information. But the taser issue is a serious one because it has been mentioned several times. Um, why didn't they have them? But this says they, this whereas clause says they did not attempt to use them. Well, that's not accurate. Okay, and Councilman Jones, I'm, I'm trying to say this in a very friendly way because it is a real solid uh, resolution. Uh, except for that little, that little section. Okay?
May I, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Jones.
So.
Actually, when Councilman Jones has been bipartisan. Today, and he always is. I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just joking.
I'm about back again. The um, Mr. Mr. President, I thank the gentleman from the greater northeast for his insight to my whereas. But it is a fact that they could not have used the taser because they did not possess tasers. Um, and we weren't trying, our intent in the resolution was not to draw judgment. On the officers as to why they didn't use it, but to draw attention to the fact that de-escalation. And mental health issues is the future of where we would like to go. I mean, I think that is reflected both by the administration and by every one of the groups that we talked to. Including um, uh, the F F O P, including the Guardian Civic League, including NOBA, NOAA, Noble. Which is a national uh, black police officers association. So in so doing, please, if I, if you misinterpreted. Us as drawing a judgment on what happened that day that such was not the case. We are talking futuristic use of force levels. So thank you for your input and thank you for your support for this.
Well, let me, let me make clear, Councilman Jones, that the inaccuracy is that they did not attempt to use a taser. If it had said they should have had a taser uh, available to them. Uh, if there was some indication that they chose not to, and that's a judgment call that could be weighed in on, on, on both sides. But they never had the tasers. This says they did not attempt to use them. I think the only fair inference. In that language is that they had tasers and did not attempt to use them, but um, we, we don't want to spend the whole day on this, but it's.
So for the record, such was not my intention in drawing um, this resolution. And I thank you again for, for the record citing the fact that they did not have them.
Okay, thank you.
In a bipartisan manner.
Okay, I'm ready to vote. Um.
Thank you.
Council President, thank you.
Thank you. We always provide a way in the end to get along in a bipartisan way. Uh, Councilman, why don't you make a motion again?
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Have it. The resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two zero zero six oh eight.
A resolution recognizing college possible Philadelphia and its first cohort of college graduates.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two zero zero six oh nine.
A resolution formally apologizing on behalf of the Council of the City of Philadelphia. For the decisions and events proceeding and leading to the devastation that occurred on May thirteen nineteen eighty five. And establishing an annual day of observation, reflection and recommitment on May thirteen. In the spirit of moving forward reconciliation, justice and harmony for all people of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Council?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two zero zero six one oh.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the Northeast High School Field Hockey Team on their third, their successful two thousand nineteen season. And conference ten and oh record in the Philadelphia Public League.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two zero zero four nine seven.
An ordinance amending bill number two zero zero three five one entitled, an ordinance authorizing the operation of sidewalk cafes. During the COVID nineteen emergency and just until December thirty one two thousand twenty. In areas of the city where such activity currently must be otherwise authorized by special ordinance. And allowing expanded activity by currently licensed sidewalk cafe operations. To extend the date, bill number two zero zero three five one will remain in effect.
Thank you. This bill having been read on two different, two different days, the question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, the eyes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members have been voted in and affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two zero zero four nine eight.
An ordinance amending bill number two zero zero three five two entitled, an ordinance amending chapter eleven one hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled general provisions. To authorize the Streets Department to permit closure of the public right of way. To extend the date, bill number two zero zero three five two will remain in effect.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question is now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, the eyes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two zero zero three six nine.
An ordinance authorizing city officials to file articles of incorporation. To establish a nonprofit corporation that should be called the Philadelphia Poverty Action Fund. For the purpose of reducing poverty in Philadelphia.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, the eyes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two zero zero four one nine.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty one from the General Fund, the Council, to the General Fund, the Director of Finance.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Okay. Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, the eyes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the committees on children and youth and education to conduct joint hearings on protocols and decision making processes. In place to protect the health and safety of young people as the school district of Philadelphia navigates a return to in person learning during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And the city's role in bridging the digital divide for children and families in the two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty one school year introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and that motion is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the fiscal stability and intergovernmental cooperation. Committee to hold ongoing hearings regarding the city of Philadelphia's coronavirus recovery plan. Including but not limited to ongoing, ongoing applications for and receipt of all recovery dollars, spending plans and decision making around. The recovery, recovery process and its impact on the city of Philadelphia's F Y two thousand twenty one budget and five year plan introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing city councils fiscal stability and intergovernmental cooperation committee to hold hearings investigating and seeking solutions for problems with the one Philly system. In light of ongoing issues and inefficiencies which are compromising the city's basic functions and public trust introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the committees on public health and human services. To hold hearings examining the state of breast cancer incidence and mortality in Philadelphia. The impact of the closure of the Susan G. Coleman Philadelphia chapter, particularly on women of color. And other resources and organizations available to help the city prioritize breast cancer control initiatives in Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. We know that uh, breast cancer is particularly devastating in the African American and Latino, Latina communities. And uh, with the closure of Susan G. Coleman, uh, while most of us were uh, busy with other things in the last week or two. Um, you know, that's something that kind of slipped in uh, unnoticed. So I wanted to make sure that people knew. That this was happening and that this uh, there, there will be a ripple effect, but there's also opportunities here. How can we get in and, and reach a community? That hasn't been reached. And so with all that being said, uh, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
Council President?
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson?
Just a small brief remark. Um, Council President, I just want to acknowledge um, Councilwoman Cindy Bass. Um, for um, this resolution and I got the phone call when. Um, I, when, when we found out that they were going to be cla- closing the Philadelphia office and just so folks may or may not know. I worked very closely with the Susan G. Coleman on foundation here in the city of Philadelphia. Um, via my staff member Tiffany White, um, in my office, been very supportive of them as related to the work that they have been doing. And I want to thank Councilwoman Bass and hopefully all of us were rallying around making sure that. The services that Susan G. Coleman was providing. I'm going to acknowledge Alan Dom as well because he's been working with Susan Gro- Susan Grohman as well around this issue. There are rising levels in a huge disparity of breast cancer, particularly. With African American women and they're getting younger and younger by the day. And just working with her group and being educated on how the health disparities even comes down to the type of care. That African American women receive versus women of non African American and people of color descent. And so losing. This office is a significant loss um, to the city of Philadelphia. And we should be rallying around uh, this resolution to try to find ways to make sure that those people are most vulnerable in this particular case. Black and brown women do not suffer as a result of a major organization being out there educating, making sure women are getting. Memograms, making sure they're being educated about um, how they should be getting tested. Um, as relates to the issue of breast cancer. And so um, Councilwoman Bass, anyway, I can be supportive. Um, in pushing this issue and making sure we're supporting um, our women. Uh, let me know how I can be a part of um, your efforts and, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, it has been moved in property seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and that has been adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Uh, that concludes our calendar for today. We will now move to our speeches and prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record. At this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be. at this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Not seeing any speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I too wanted to take this opportunity to thank both, uh, Council Members, uh, Bass along with Johnson. Um, I did not know until, um, reading, uh, the cosponsorship, uh, memo that the Philadelphia office for Susan G. Coleman had closed. Uh, but Councilwoman Bass, you noted for the record that this could also present, uh, an opportunity. And, uh, my, my brain was churning. Um, about three years ago, the Philadelphia chapter of the Links, uh, honored an organization, um, called Tracy's Bio. Tracy's Bio. And it is an organization that is specifically geared to, uh, women of color, black women, and the impact that breast cancer, um, has disproportionately had on that community. Um, I know, um, Lorena Marshall Blake, um, was very, very active in that organization. And I know some of you remember when we, um, introduced the resolution in council and we honored Tracy's Bio uh, in our body. So the hope is that, um, the resources, uh, that are needed to ensure that, uh, women are, uh, still informed and educated about the issue of, uh, breast cancer. Uh, the hope is that an African-American, uh, sort of owned, founded, and operated organization, uh, Tracy's Bio, that hopefully it becomes, uh, a priority uh, for investment from the philanthropic, uh, community along with local state, uh, and federal government. And I just wanted to put that, uh, on the record. And also special thanks to, uh, Melanie Lassiter because when the Links, um, worked with Tracy's Bio, it was first connected, uh, because of Melanie Lassiter. Um, thank you so much, Mr. President and colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Um, we all know that this, um, pandemic that we've been dealing with has impacted uh, so many different organizations and activities, um, that need our support. Uh, in particular, um, the Red Cross. Um, blood donations have been significantly down, um, because of the pandemic. I know, uh, myself and Councilmember Scola have sponsored, um, blood drives both in this building and throughout the city to support, uh, the Red Cross. Um, as we get ready for the Thanksgiving holiday, um, I will be sponsoring, uh, a Red Cross blood drive. It's a Thanksgiving back drive. Uh, and it will be held on, um, November twenty-fourth, uh, from nine AM to two PM at the Red Cross location, twenty-two, twenty-one Chestnut Street. Um, I've given blood during the pandemic. I know Councilmember Scola has done as well, as well as others. Uh, you can do it in a safe, uh, environment. And the Red Cross takes, you know, significant precautions to make sure that everyone is safe. In particular, if you have a, a type of blood that's really needed, uh, especially for all of the people, um, that donate blood is so important. Um, what the Red Cross has done, you know, more recently is that after you give blood, they give you an email confirmation, give you a specific information how your blood has helped some person. Uh, and it's so vital, especially during this time when we're dealing this, with this surge of the pandemic um, throughout the City of Philadelphia and throughout our nation. For those who want to sign up for the blood drive on November twenty-fourth, uh, you can go to redcrossblood.org and you can use sponsor code GREEN. Uh, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, for that very important information. It does not, to me, appear to be any additional speeches on behalf of the minority. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I just had two quick comments. One, on behalf of all of us, I actually like to congratulate Councilmember Derek Green on becoming president of the Pennsylvania Municipal League. So congratulations to you, Derek. We're all very proud of you. Thank you. Also want to mention, um, I watched Councilmember Maria Kenona Sanchez do her magic in the Housing Committee recently, much behind the scenes, doing an unbelievable thing to help on this eviction matter. I just want to say thank you to her for all her work and efforts. I thought it was pretty amazing. So thank you and thank you, Council President.
Thank you, and congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you all.
Congratulations on your awesome work on the National League of Cities also. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. And quickly, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilmember Dom, and giving kudos to, uh, Councilwoman Sanchez and, uh, all of the members of the Housing Committee for the excellent work that was done, uh, last week, particularly around providing much-needed revenue for individuals who were in process, um, for eviction prior to, uh, COVID-nineteen. So thank you to our Chair of Appropriations, uh, Councilmember Sanchez. It was really a pleasure to, to work with you on that effort. And secondly, I just wanted to remind everyone that, uh, our city, uh, council will hold for the first time ever a police reform public comment hearing, uh, next week in City Council's Committee of the Whole. It will be Wednesday, November eighteenth at ten AM. Uh, individuals would like to sign up for public comment, uh, they can call two one five six eight six zero four five four or email eliza dot alfred at philadelphia.gov. The deadline is next Tuesday, November seventeenth at three PM. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Lady. Um, appears to be no, no more speeches?
Councilwoman Gilmore, oh, okay. Mr. President, if I may, Mr. Pres, just, so, uh, Council, uh, Member Dom and Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson, thank you so much, um, for giving us an update on, um, sort of the, the work, uh, on the Housing Committee relative to the issue of, um, evictions. Uh, Mr. President, I remember probably about maybe two or three sessions ago, um, I had mentioned, uh, on the record, because again, when most of the work, substantive work that's being done by our body, lots of times, like, people don't see it. Um, and I was talking about, you know, your communication, um, with the judiciary, just trying to work and use another, a tool to address that, uh, issue. So Councilwoman Maria Kenona Sanchez, uh, Council President Clark, Dom Gilmore Richardson, um, Gem, uh, Gaultier, and all members of that committee, I want to say a special, uh, thank you, uh, to you all. I wasn't there. I didn't get a chance to participate, um, in that work. But, um, you guys did it. And again, once you get solutions, they're not always done in public. So thank you for the outcomes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Council, Councilwoman Gem?
Yes, thank you so much. And thank you, Madam, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Council Majority Leader, um, for acknowledging, um, all of the members of the committee. Um, you know, especially, you know, the, the committee chair. Um, I just wanted to clarify some things. Um, you know, this was a very challenging area for all of us. And it caused us to confront some serious questions about, uh, what, what the committee and what council's, uh, role is going to be in terms of the eviction moratorium. And, you know, as we hit unprecedented levels, as CHOP calls this a catastrophic situation, um, you know, as, you know, CHOP is also urging, uh, school districts in our suburbs to potentially close down. You know, we, we were confronted with difficult issues. We couldn't quite get the eviction moratorium through the Housing Committee, but fortunately, the conversations that we had been having ongoing with the courts um, through the summer, and I do want to thank, uh, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for, for helping and, uh, you know, being thoughtful about, uh, conversations with the courts. I really want to acknowledge the leadership of, um, Judge, uh, Matthew Wolf, uh, who's the new presiding judge, um, on the Civil Division, uh, and Patrick Dugan, uh, who had been having a number of conversations, uh, with the city, uh, and city agencies. Um, but, you know, this is going to be ongoing. I, I don't know where this goes. Um, you know, we are, as, I want to thank the Council President for opening up with a prayer for our city, uh, for people who are very vulnerable. Um, but, you know, it is worth noting that for, for, uh, large portion of this pandemic, uh, the city that ranks fourth in the nation in terms of evictions has largely not evicted. And that's been through a combination of the work that's done through council, uh, through the courts and through our city agencies. Um, you know, I would hate to see what happens were, were we to engage, um, and try to, you know, go back to, uh, doing almost fifteen hundred a month, four hundred a week, um, as, as has, has been done in two thousand nineteen. But I know that we can work on this together, and I want to appreciate the leadership of, um, you know, our, our committee chairwoman and the members of the Housing Committee to engage. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I now believe that we have concluded all of our speeches, going once, going twice, going three times. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, at ten AM.
Second.
Thank you. This been moved and properly seconded. Council stand adjourned until Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, ten AM. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much. And please be safe. Thank you, Councilman.